Alright, it is July 1st. And we are going to begin this regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. First, we'll ask that everyone please turn off our silence cell phones. Um, then we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let's begin. We get a motion to approve today's agenda, but no one has any changes requested.
Um, one small change, Sammy didn't really have anything um for the meeting today, so number two will come off.
Okay.
And I'll be presenting for Zoe.
Okay. Approve the motion to approve the agenda with noted changes?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, to a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Alright, agenda is approved. Next, we will move on to community information items. Um, I'll go first with this, uh, we had some updates from uh events that happened over the weekend. The county had uh attended a community Q and A event out at Ski Cooper, which is a community uh asset. It is also um a uh entity that is here in Lake County and is also uh an a- a- a integral part of the county as far as you know, or a community partnership. The Lake County government holds the permits that Ski Cooper uses to um that the ski runs sit on. Lake County owns the land at the base area that Cooper's facilities are situated on. So while it's complicated, there's an undeniable need for there to be cooperation and collaboration with Ski Cooper and Lake County. Um, without a positive relationship there, it's, there's gonna be a lot of unnecessary problems that could be easily avoided. And currently, there's some breakdown in that relationship and despite whatever's floating around on social media or other uh you know, talk about out and about, the county is committed, the B O C C is committed to repairing these relationships, making changes where they make sense to prevent breakdowns like this from happening again in the future and preserving the Ski Cooper that we know and love. No way, shape, or form is the B O C C looking to create, to harm the Ski Cooper situation that we have. We don't wanna see massive changes to how they operate, how they run. We don't wanna see any interruption in the ski areas' operations themselves. There's, there's some pretty small, simple asks that we've made and they've caused a lot of problems. And what we're trying to get to is the root of why some requests seem to have created such discourse and combative dialogue. Um, so in the coming days and weeks, we're gonna be putting out a lot of information to the public, fact-based stuff that we can back up, um, that shows why we're doing what we're doing. And I would really encourage people in the public to listen to both sides of this before forming opinions because every situation has two sides. I've come into a lot of situations since coming to this position where I had pretty hard opinions about what I thought needed to happen. And when I heard both sides of things, my positions evolved and they grew when I learned more. So I would really like to encourage the community to remember that approach when this situation arises and misinformation and untruths and misrepresentations are getting thrown all over the place. So everyone, the Cooper Board, B O C C, everyone has Ski Cooper's best interests at heart. We all care deeply about this place. No one wants to see anything detrimental happen. No one wants to see the vibe change. No one wants to see anything go wrong with our power turns. I love power turns more as much as anyone in this community. So I just wanna get that out there right off the bat because it's something extremely important to me. I'm passionate, very passionate about this subject and uh I don't think anyone could deny that on any side of this situation. So that's all I have for right now.
I don't have anything today. Appreciate your comments, Andy.
Thank you.
I do too. It was not just um, it wasn't just Saturday that the community had, that had events. I went to the Elsie Bag Food Coalition event. That was a documentary and discussion on food access in our community. The documentary was on Laura Suarta, who is the leader of the National Farm Workers Association. Um, she's been a major political activist for decades and it was a wonderful event, lots of participation. And loved having a movie in the park. Um, I do think that, you know, the Ski Cooper conversations have been really sad for me frankly. Um, to like be accused of trying to shut something down, to be accused of money grabs, to be accused of a lot of really awful things that have never been what we're trying to do. Um, when we're trying to speak up for the community that we've been asked to represent is sad to me. And I think that especially with the passing of the one big beautiful bill that provides tax cuts to the most wealthy people in our nation and cuts food benefits through SNAP programs, federally funded SNAP programs, and cuts Medicaid. Um, it's just, I'm not distracted by the Ski Cooper conversations because I know what our job is and our duty is, is to help protect people. But I am just like doubly sad that what our, some leaders in our community are talking about is Ski Cooper. Like this is the priority of what we're talking about and that makes me really sad because the things that are happening around us and by leaders higher up are going to significantly harm our community and people we care about, not just in Lake County, but all over the country. And I'm just disappointed that we're so distracted, some people are so distracted by Ski Cooper and they're not looking at the whole picture. That's my community update.
Alright, thank you Commissioner Tharp. Um, meeting recordings are available on the county's YouTube page. It's a reminder that all regular meetings and work sessions are recorded and available on Lake County Government YouTube channel with transcribed and indexed videos. Recordings can be watched at a time that's best for you. Subscribe to stay informed on county decisions. At this time, we will move to public comment. Public comment is available for residents wishing to speak on an agenda item or other, another issue not on the agenda. To make a public comment, residents may request to speak by, excuse me, raising your hand in person, using the raise hand feature in Zoom, and sending a message in chat. The chair will call on the public in order. Comment is limited to three minutes, not including board questions. Action if required will be assigned to county staff. The chair may also ask that public comment on a specific, on specific agenda items be held for later in the meeting. In certain instances, public comment will not be accepted, such as on public hearing items noted on the agenda. Let's start with people in the room. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment at this time? Yes, state your name and where, where your address, sorry, and uh go ahead.
Sure. My name is Chris Olney. I'm with Colorado Springs Utilities. I'm up here, I got the pleasure of being able to support that CCI and we have a brief conversation. My purpose here is kind of an outreach. We're not looking to do any projects in the valley. There might be some thought and talk around that. But my purpose here is to kind of do an outreach and the fact that the front range is growing at a speed that's uncontrollable. And we wanna reach out to the entire Arkansas basin, uh, from the headwaters to the Kansas line and meet with all the county commissioners, kind of talk about the needs that we have, but also to kind of hear the needs that you have. And not only from a water side, but from other aspects, community, electric, economic development, recreation. We know all these things are tied together and we wanna start talking to all the commissioners along the Arkansas basin and put a plan as a basin together so we can all communicate and talk and have those really tough conversations around what's going on and how things are developing and try to find solutions as a whole and not as individuals. So my ask is that maybe we can set up some time for us to come up, sit down with the commissioners in a work session, kind of tell us what you're dealing with, we can tell you what we're dealing with, we can start having that back-to-back relationship and kind of go forward from there.
Great, thank you. We will uh make sure you have all of our contact information and see what we can do to follow up and have some of these collaborations and communications and figure out what we wanna figure out and see how we can help each other.
Yeah, I appreciate your calm about relationships because that's really what it's gonna come down to is having strong relationships and not having the fighting or utilities acting on their own best interest without impacting the community because we realize that we do, our actions on the front range are gonna impact this community and all the communities along the Arkansas.
Great.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, we recently heard about the, what were you gonna talk about this Matt? The, the designation that Lake County would be included in with Colorado Springs is looking for like a protected designation or military designation, I don't know.
On the federal level?
Yeah.
I'm on that one?
Yeah.
There are a couple proposals that are out. Some are wilderness areas, some are protected areas. There's a lot of what the federal government's, any thinking of their offices are looking at finding ways to protect Colorado from public land sales or wilderness engagement or those other acts. They're working on that right now. That's something they'll be given influence on, but it still literally works.
Okay, maybe that could be part of our conversation, that is, the ways in which Colorado Springs and entities within Colorado Springs are seeking to include Lake County in any of those protections.
Yep, absolutely, that'd be great.
Thank you.
That was, I think it's something different, that what we're, what we saw was a conservation overlay district that overlays Colorado Springs with the whole Arkansas Valley based on protection of water rights or the watershed and also a conservation area really based on protection of the military installations in Colorado Springs. So that's, it comes from the conservation district and I think it is a military, you know, the goal is to protect the assets of Colorado Springs.
Oh, it's right over here. I was like, where are our documents on this?
That would be perfect because I don't know anything about it, but I could reach out to all of the leaders and find out what's actually going on and bring that back to you guys.
I'm sorry, it was right there.
Do you represent the Utilities Commission or?
I represent Colorado Springs Utilities.
Colorado Springs Utilities, anything to do with water?
Yeah, a lot of water, yes.
A lot of water. You guys keep a lot, you, you have a lot of water rights in this valley.
Yes, we do, yeah, yeah. The headwaters, Twin, Turquoise.
Yeah.
All of Colorado Springs, it's all in Lake County.
It's a battle between you and Pueblo and Aurora, is that right?
A little bit.
Battle's a tough word.
Yeah.
And us.
It's a conversation, you know, we're all growing, that's, that's the problem is, we don't have a say in how we grow.
Right.
The city grows, we're obligated as utility to provide a service. We'd like to see a planning, like a fifty to a hundred year planning process implemented with all the counties that we impact. So we can kind of say, okay, in twenty-five and fifty years, this is gonna be our need to provide for our customers, what can we do with all the counties to find that and to provide that without say impacting just Lake County or just Bend County or just Pueblo?
Are we talking about water primarily?
We like to talk more than just water because we're doing some other operations with Pueblo and Bend and Browers County with some economic development. We have some businesses that come to Colorado Springs that we can't provide based on their size. Fifty employees or less really doesn't fit to the business model of Colorado Springs, but it may fit better in London or Los Angeles. Like they have those relationships, we can say, hey, you need to call this Board of County Commissioners for this business to move that along. Or it could be a recreation opportunity. You know, in Chaffee and Fremont County, we do water control, you know, water sharing. We can control flows up and down the Arkansas, so the rafting season is longer. Those kind of opportunities, everything we can to work as a whole, as a community.
Right. That's great. Well, that document we just gave you is something that was just brought to us that has a Colorado Springs connection. So even if it's not Colorado Springs Utilities, it's definitely part of the conversation that we'll need to make sure we're considering and understanding.
I will make sure we meet, I have some information and some background for this.
Thank you.
Please.
That'd be wonderful.
Cool. Do you have a contact information you can leave with us?
Absolutely.
Cool.
Can you give it in?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. Thank you. We'll reach out.
Thank you.
Have a good day, Christopher.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, next, go ahead.
Yeah, hi everyone, I'm Dean Iry. I'm a county resident. I'm at uh 1218 Seventeenth Street, homeowner. Um, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about Ski Cooper. I know there's a lot of other important issues out there. But I really wanted to come in, I just feel sometimes with all this going on that the commissioner isn't, the commission isn't representing constituents like me. Uh, there's a lot of us that feel this way. Hey, I get it, there's issues you guys have with communication with Cooper, it seems like. Um, I know sometimes you guys think they could do more for access and other things. Um, but at the same time, I would like our elected officials to be leaders and you know, do things to help improve communications. So I really have like two concerns. One, like if you guys wanna increase communication and do things like that, I think that article that you put out in the paper two weeks ago is not gonna help bind, you know, make you guys come together and hold hands. I think a lot of that, if you read into that, I think the impression was that like Cooper's not doing anything for the community. Where they, where they are doing things, giving away ten percent of their profit, they're paying for a bus to get people access, they're giving free tickets to Full Circle, so I mean, honestly, the impression I get, it was good to hear what you said today that it's, you know, a little negative towards Cooper, which, you know, I, I think you love, like you said, and you know, that's one of the highlights of this community. So I mean, I would just ask you guys as leaders, for me being constituent and others, just, you know, be leaders and not agitators of the situation, which I think you heard a little bit at that meeting too. Um, the other thing, and more importantly, and I, you know, you guys know this, but I guess I'll say it since we're being videotaped here is, um, as you know, like the Forest Service had issues where they felt Cooper wasn't in compliance with a, with a number of things. Um, of course, they, they did, redid the plan, gave it to you guys. Um, but you guys have held it, am I correct, and not submitted it?
The M D P will be turned in on time. There's no, no way, shape, or form, the master development plan for Ski Cooper will not make it into the hands of the Forest Service by the deadline.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I understand by the deadline, but you guys have had it since May. And there's some issues there, there's some compliance issues that have been addressed. Others, like the point of entry, for instance, like maybe that could have, if you guys would have just submitted it, it wouldn't have, that could have been addressed, that misunderstanding, and that, that wouldn't be an issue where now they're gonna have to remove all that and scan everybody at every lift. So, you know, I, I, it's good to hear that you guys are definitely submitting the plan on time, but I think, you know, some things could have been done to make it earlier and maybe address some of those issues quicker. And that's, you know, that's really all I have to say. But um, you know, I appreciate you guys hearing what you said about Cooper. Um, but I just thought I should, wanted to voice my opinion to a lot of other people that can't, obviously can't be here eleven. So thanks for listening.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. And this is like part of it, you know, it's the most important part is that we have these conversations, we have these dialog. Um, we get, you know, you brought up a couple things that I'm just gonna touch on, just so, you know, we get both sides. Um, you know, the bus, Cooper's already stated and been very clear, they're not gonna continue with the bus, even though ridership was increasing and it just, it's not even gonna get a chance to show that what NASA said it could be. Um, there's been a lot of complaining about the fact that that bus even had, you know, was implemented. Um, so, you know.
What were people complaining about?
Ski Cooper was complaining about.
They said how much it cost them.
Forty-five grand.
Um, so, you know, I think from the county's perspective, when we talk about the bus, it's like, okay, well, let's look outside and see what other partnerships we can find and maybe there's some transportation, uh, some assistance. You know, maybe we can split the cost, maybe we can find other entities that will help. But these conversations are becoming really hard to have. Um, you know, you mentioned passes to Full Circle, these aren't even getting used anymore. And we're looking for like, okay, you guys are doing this thing that's not being utilized. What are other options? What are, why are we wasting your resources on this if no one's even utilizing it? And why do we have to be the ones to even call that out? So let's find other ways to, you know, instead of maybe this, this ten passes or fifteen passes you've been given to this group, maybe we've looked for something else. But again, these conversations are becoming really difficult to have. And to make it clear, like, we're not asking Cooper to do everything. We're asking them to just come to the table and work with us to identify who our other partners can be within the community and that's becoming really difficult. And we're not the first board to have these issues. It's just since I'm extremely passionate about this subject, I'm kind of pushing it and, and the other commissioners as well. We're, we're making it and, you know, we're addressing it and it needs to be fixed and we have to work together. Or, you know, the last year for Cooper's been really hard between the Forest Service, these problems with the county, community discourse, you know, like there are a lot of people we talked to who are really opposed to the port of entry. You know, it's not just, this is great, you know, there's gonna be long lift lines at the bottom of the T-bar if we get rid of this thing. That's kind of a misstatement, like they're not gonna, it would be really silly. I've been in the ski industry for decades, so it'd be silly for them to scan at the bottom of the T-bar. But those were things that were brought up and said, like as.
Why would they have an issue with the port of entry?
There's a handful of them and I'm, I'm happy to have those conversations and, and we've got a lot of public outreach in the next coming days and weeks to sort of explain why we have to be the voice of people who can tell you what their problems are with the port of entry, what other issues are with the port of entry. And the Forest Service has a problem with the port of entry.
Misunderstanding.
And it's not just, it's not just the Forest Service, you know, there's plenty of people in the community who are really turned off by that. And I've, I've witnessed firsthand personally, plenty of issues with it. But again, these communications, they break down as soon as we try to bring our accounts of these problems to the Cooper Board. So what the county is doing, next steps is, since we all don't get along, we're gonna hire a mediator, a neutral third party to facilitate the next get-together. We have not heard back from Cooper on this yet, but hopefully they're willing to engage with us. We're not gonna stop trying, you know, it's like that's because we care about this place. And, you know, it's, something's gotta change, something's gotta be fixed. And I hope we can do it in a positive way that brings, that does not, it will not affect Cooper's day-to-day operations, doesn't change the staff and the department heads out there. They're great, love all of it. They're doing a phenomenal job. Their fiscal responsibility is stellar, top-notch, you know. There's just some small asks that we've made that seem to be really problematic with the board. And I think, you know, this is where we need to find solutions, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Well, I feel like as we've been trying to engage with Ski Cooper, the Ski Cooper Board, not the staff, right? Because we don't have, we don't have relationships with the staff. Um, it's become this like existential threat that we're trying to shut them down, that we are, we're going to like be.
I don't think, I mean, I don't know the people, I know, like, I don't think they think they're trying to shut them down, you know.
So so what would leadership look like to you in this situation if we have constituents who need more, who, we have plenty of constituents who are getting exactly what they want and need and it's great. And then we have plenty of constituents who are asking for things to change that would not affect the constituents.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not on the board, I don't, I'm not on this board, but I, I think, uh, I don't know, just from outside looking in, I think, yeah, you have constituents that are happy and like you said, you have some that, that don't, aren't obviously, or you guys wouldn't be bringing this up. I, I think, you know, let's, like in the article that you write, let's highlight the positives of Cooper at the same time saying, hey, this is some things that I think we, you know, that we've heard that maybe we could do. But it, it looked like, honestly, I'm just giving it straight to you guys, it looked more like hatchet job against Cooper from you guys. Without, oh, you didn't, there was no positivity in it and I just, I think, you know, you gotta straddle the line. You have people that are happy that are constituents, you don't wanna make unhappy and at the same time, so I would say, keep it positive for both sides. It's just me looking in.
Thank you, that's really important, that really.
I mean, because they, you know, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know, just, that's what my thoughts are.
That perspective is so valuable, that's, I really wanted to know, so thank you.
Dean, I think that's what's really been missing is calm conversation and we're so new at this. We really need to take our time and like I said in the letter that I have hopefully coming out is, you know, we're new, but we're fair and we're willing to negotiate. But we have to take our time to really figure out what has been going on with the previous boards and what's been going on with Cooper. There's been conflict there for a long time. And so we're trying to be deliberate, but we're also, I think, fair and real diverse opinions up here. And, you know, that may not suit some people in this situation, but in issues down the road, you know, that's gonna suit maybe the same people really well. So right now, it seems like it's just gonna be a PR battle and we appreciate you saying maybe we can back off on some of the negative stuff and uh, and, and, you know, they know their fiscal, you know, their fiscal acumen is top-notch, it's great. And we, and a lot of people that have talked to us don't feel that that's enough. And it's certainly part of it. We wanna, you know, commend them for that and, and other things that we can find, so. But again, we're just looking for negotiation and we have to represent the people that aren't happy. We have to represent the kids, the kids that have Fridays off, that wanna go skiing, that can afford it. Those are the people we're trying to.
Hundred, hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you so much.
But you see what's missing is, is the easy dialogue back and forth and we just feel like, you know, we're at, that we're doing the necessary battle and people are gonna get hurt for no reason and we can just all be adults and try and work it out. So we appreciate you, so, you know, coming in, it's not easy.
Yeah.
Thanks guys.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Alright, uh, anything else for anyone in the room? Anyone online? Don't see any hands raised.
Slow today.
Sure is.
Everyone's starting the holiday early.
Yeah, I did too, actually.
How many people online, how many people online yet?
Just one, Andy, the deputy clerk is online.
Okay, well, uh, let's.
Only four things on the agenda.
Yeah.
Thanks guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, Dean. Sorry. Hey, anybody who wants to chat with us, will you just let them know they're welcome to come, contact us, chat, text, whatever? If, if people have more specific questions.
Yeah.
I know there's a lot of questions and some people are.
I mean, there's, there's definitely an impression out there that you guys are holding a permit.
I know, we know that.
You know that, like, and which, you know, that, that, that's a whole different issue, like, let's get, you're, by not getting the improvements Cooper needs, it's hurting everyone, regardless who has access or not, you know.
Oh, yeah, we're totally, we hear that, it's not.
You mean that we're holding the M D P permit and the M D P has to come from us. We have, our lease is from the Forest Service and their leases from us, so if it's coming from us, we would like the chance to review it and amend it. We, we reserve that right to amend it. If it's coming from us, we would like the chance to review it and amend it, we we reserve that right to amend it, reflecting views that, you know, that are not just the board, so.
Yeah, I mean, without it, they can't do any, they have to stop any.
That's not necessarily true.
That's not true.
Not if it is.
The MDP is just a roadmap, it's not a binding document, it just allows the Forest Service to um, approve, you know, it 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 lays the groundwork for what the Forest Service can or cannot approve moving forward. Um, but if it's not turned in on time, it will be a serious hindrance, and we recognize that, and that's not.
We'll all be in violation of the lease.
Yeah.
They were given approval to move forward with that subject system a long time ago.
They could be doing that.
That's the main issue, they could be doing that? So why aren't they doing that?
It's not us.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks Dean.
Thanks guys.
It is so complicated, how do you explain to people that like, we wanna have this conversation first before we have the MDP conversations? And that's where they think that we're like, what was the word they used?
Well, in MDP hostage, blackmail.
Blackmail, holding a gun to our head, I think, you know, I'm gonna be open to admitting that like, if there was a miscommunication, and we didn't express clearly enough that we just wanted more discussion before we turned it in, and that turned into they're holding this thing hostage. You know, I I'll take ownership of that for not clarifying, you know, that 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 could have been a misunderstanding. But it's hard, how do you clear up misunderstandings when you you can't have dialogue to begin with, it makes it really hard. So we're trying, we're doing our best. Um, okay, moving on. Um, Agenda item number one, calendar work session and regular meeting agenda review led by phenomenal Sandra Pettis, executive administrative assistant.
Wow.
All right, let's see here. Start on the Monday the seventh, go share those. Okay, uh, Monday the seventh, all I'm showing is the Housing Coalition monthly, monthly meeting from six to eight.
Okay.
Turn. Tuesday the eighth, uh, Lake County Tourism Panel has their monthly meeting from eight thirty to ten thirty. You will have your AM work session from nine AM to twelve PM. Your afternoon work session from one to four PM. And Lake County Public Library Board of Trustees meeting is from six thirty to eight PM. A few more Wednesdays of extra work sessions, and then I think we can look at scaling back.
Well, then we'll get into a whole new, different season.
Yeah, I know. It's budget, it, you know, budget stuff is, yeah.
Yeah, budget tense, yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, so.
More utilization.
Right.
That's what we tried to keep work sessions lighter ahead of all the budget meetings and.
Oh. Yeah, yep. Um, okay, Wednesday the ninth, uh, Community Coffee from eight thirty to ten. Um, I just went ahead and put these on the calendar, I guess, we're still waiting, um, but Arkansas Basin Roundtable Executive Board Meeting from ten thirty to twelve. Um, your one Wednesday work session from ten thirty to twelve. And Arkansas Basin Roundtable Regular Meeting from twelve thirty to three. Thursday the tenth, what I'm showing is Land Bill Sanitation District Board of Directors Meeting from three eighteen to five. And Thursday the eleventh, Twin Lakes Community Coffee from nine to ten. I'll look in.
That's what I'm seeing.
Right. I'll look at the work session agendas for next week. On the eighth, your morning work session, we'll start with a quick calendar review with me. Um, and then we'll move on to quarter two budget presentations to include an overview of quarter one budgeted amounts, and year-to-date actuals for all funds, uh, led by Candace. Take about a ten fifteen minute break, um, and then we'll move into twenty twenty-six budget direction and guidelines, also led by Candace.
Click the seven, eight, twenty-one.
All right, afternoon. This will be, ooh, petitions. E nine one one authority budget update with Heath. Supplemental request for the Sheriff's Office with Heath. Um, supplemental request for water with Bryce. I can read through all of these if you would like, but um, supplemental for housing funds, um, with Candace. This will be, uh, supplemental request for tourism with Adam.
Ooh, I like G. Yeah, man. Yeah, man. I thought he was gonna talk about paving.
So this is the flavor of the day, Skicoober is not a flavor of the day.
Uh, so that will, that will take up your afternoon work session. We're, we're lucky, it might end a little bit early.
Lucky to have you there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, keeping that shit. Thanks, Scotty.
That's why we said we need to balance these things out.
All right, and on Wednesday the night, will be overview and discussion of a partnership between Lake County Public Library and Lake County Civic Center Association, and a draft operations plan for the possible management and maintenance of the Heritage Museum with Brenna Smith.
Where's the Heritage Museum? At the top of the hill.
It's across from the fire station.
Yeah, is that Carnegie?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll, on the corner there. And then we'll take a quick peek at the draft for the next regular meeting on seventeen. Another somewhat shorty, right, your normal work session, calendar, regular meeting, agenda review, communications update and review. We will have discussion and consideration of the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five. Um, Resolution of Lake County approving the transfer of previously appropriated monies between funds or between spending agencies of Lake County, Colorado, and adopting a supplemental budget and making supplemental and revised appropriations for Lake County, Colorado for the fiscal period beginning the first day of January twenty twenty-five and ending the last day of December twenty twenty-five. This will be led by Candace. We also have discussion and consideration of the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six. Amendment to twenty twenty-five certification of mill levy from Lake County, also led by Candace. Um, CPD will have land use file twenty-five dash twenty regarding a commercial recreation permit for the e-bike shop. Uh, this will be led by Melissa Kendrick. And county manager update, we should have time for that, so also that not even today.
You're gonna sneak a hearing for me, it sounds like. It's a lot of money.
Um, and then, uh, consent agenda, um, ratification of an MOU. For local level inter-agency oversight groups involving Lake County Human Services. Ratification of an MOU between Cole and High Mountain Institute for the Rockies Rock Adventure Camp Backpacking Trip. Ratification of an amendment to the PSA with Savio House for Horse Services. Just normal, normal and that's beautiful stuff. Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I haven't seen the e-bike issue come up on on the, uh, land use.
I know.
They won't have their meeting until the eighth, but given the timeline, they get the drafts and stuff into us ahead of time, and then they have their meeting, and then they'll finalize their drafts right before our meeting, so.
So we'll do the planning commission first.
Yeah. Yeah, Melissa should have at least the drafts and stuff to me, um, I believe this week, so, yeah, I'd be able to take a look at it. I'll get your packet back.
If you haven't, just check in with her about the, what the history is or.
And when shall I talk about the formal direction from the Meral Milk Trail Committee on that issue, I guess, at the planning commission meeting?
Planning Commission, yeah.
Hopefully.
And that's, will I be gone?
I think you'll be gone, it's the seventh.
Could use his name, or?
Yeah. Seven thirty, I think.
If there's something you want to think of.
Or send somebody else?
Pretty sure there's no service on that beach.
I could speak for her.
We're gonna go ahead and say there's no service.
Yeah, there is.
I would roll with that.
That's the committee to come, yeah.
I would definitely roll with that.
Yeah.
You mean you'll be underwater.
But you need to.
I could send you now to, or send a mail to Candace.
I would do it to someone on the Meral Milk Trail Committee, because since we'll be part of the decision-making process, which will probably be less entangled.
Okay.
It should compromise. And, and or have it sent to Anne, have it sent to CPD, so that it gets to all the planning commissioners and us. Yeah, earlier, like before the meeting would be great. That's what I would do.
Okay, um, we are moving past agenda item number two, as previously discussed, you know, is that all you have for us, Sandra?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on, striking agenda item number two to agenda item number three, discussion and consideration of the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, a resolution to adopt the Lake County Government Pet Policy. This will be led by Candace Brians, county manager, with a desired outcome being a decision, the OCC.
So, we've never had a pet policy, um, at Lake County Government, and we, um, have a duty to protect those of us who love having pets at work and those of us who do not. Um, so, we are introducing a new pet policy that defines that pets are the responsibility of their owner if in the building. Um, that they need to be leashed and with the owner. We are limiting the days that they're allowed in office to Tuesdays and Wednesdays, because the second part of the policy asks that they are not in conference rooms and meetings. Um, just because we love our pets does not mean that people coming to meet with us always do. Um, so we want for people that love having their pet with them to be able to. Um, but also for for individuals that maybe are not as happy with pets to have a break from them, uh, being here, so we're asking that pets are on leashes and controlled their owner with their owner. Uh, and also that we have some days, Mondays are pretty busy. Fridays tend to not be, but Fri- Mondays and Thursdays are really our busiest days, we're saying we would like to have a break from from pets when we have lots of meetings. Because we don't have so many meeting spaces. Um, and right now, pets are allowed whenever not leashed. Uh, the other ask is that they are potty trained, we have new carpet put in some of our buildings and, um, unpotty trained pets. While we love little unpotty trained pets, they're ruining our carpets. So, we are gonna try having a pet policy because I really feel, I didn't wanna say no pets, because I do think pets change the vibe at work. They're awesome, who didn't love that little puppy that was in here earlier? But we really do wanna respect other people that feel differently, and also make sure that our our floors and spaces are taken care of, and that when we have other people come to meet with us from outside organizations, we respect that they may or may not be as thrilled with our pets as we are. That's it.
Okay, that's a good question.
Yes.
What about, um, the public bringing, we get a lot of people that bring pets into our offices.
Uh, I don't know that we can do anything about the public, because we're not allowed to ask if their service animals are not, and we wouldn't know.
So that's still gonna be allowed?
Yeah, because I don't know that, I don't think legally we can ask if it's a service animal, would people bring them in? Um, we did, we do have a provision that any department director or elected official's office, if you guys don't wanna allow pets at all, that is up to your discretion. So we we do leave that with the directors to say, hey, this doesn't make sense for us, this isn't.
What, um, I didn't see anything in there about allergies?
That's what I was.
Like if somebody in the workplace has an allergy to pets?
Then I think that's when a director can say, hey, we've got someone in our department who's expressed they cannot be on Pets Day of allergies, we will not do that.
Cool, and then if they don't do that, those employees have recourse to be able to like, get them to do that.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Good.
Um, I think.
That's why we left it up to department directors, they're gonna know, they're staff.
Yeah.
Under this policy, wouldn't what we already just did this morning be not allowed?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, we have to figure that out, have a pet puppy.
How, you know, okay, what happens if someone breaks the pet policy, if we do this?
Then they would be asked to not bring their pet back.
They lose the privilege.
It is, a lot of places they know pets, and we don't want to do that.
Yeah.
But we have to have some rules, we can just have pets run wild.
Right. Um, even puppies, is there?
Even puppies.
I don't know, I don't. I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer something, I have been in so many workplaces that have, uh, these rules. And I respect where they come from, and I understand them. And what I have seen is, uh, just such a huge distraction about modifying this rule as things come up, like, I worked at a place where the the dog, it was a dog policy, because nobody's bringing a cat or bird in. But the dog policy was talked about every single week at our leadership meetings. And I just, this seems okay, I would maybe add Fridays, because
Okay.
Friday, because like, there's so few people in this field, building on Fridays sometimes.
I'm fine with that.
That would personally be my opinion, but I want to like, set it and forget it.
Okay, if you want me to add Fridays, we can do that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What do you all think?
That's fine with me.
My asks would probably be too distracting, I would like to make a provision that if everyone in the room in a certain meeting is okay with a pet being there, then you know, there's no one who has an allergy, or is gonna, you know, but there's no way to do that every time, it's distracting, like you said.
It puts people in a comfortable spot where they have to ask.
Yeah, and and someone's like, actually, I don't want this pet here, then they're the bad guy, you know, so it's like,
Yeah, and then they're going to be, they're dog hairs, yeah.
I wish we could have something like that, and and open a window for puppy snuggles on the agenda item, but, you know, we just.
I think we can write that in, we can write in puppy snuggles on the agenda.
I don't think we can.
Yes.
Yeah, if it's on the agenda, maybe, so, yeah, I don't, but it's such a distraction, like I also said, and we got work to do, and as much as I wanna,
Yeah, so, um. Yeah.
You know, as much as I love pets, there's too much room for misinterpretation, and, you know, weird, oh, but you don't like my pet snake, you know, like, you know.
Well, the di- just to be clear, the distraction to me is talking about the policy
Yeah.
over and over and over again, and somebody want, is like, well, I want my dog to come on Mondays, because that's the day that my spouse works, and that's the only day that I get to have the pet, or blah, like, I don't wanna keep having that.
No.
Yeah, we got, we got work to do.
Is what I mean.
We want, because whatever it is, is what it is.
It just has to be what it is, so, I understand, as much as I love who wants pets as much as the next guy, and I wish I could bring my big goofy wolf dog in here. who wants pets as much as the next guy and I wish I could bring my big goofy old dog in here to, you know, act like a big numpty.
Me too.
It's not, it's just not appropriate.
Yeah, and and the policy does reference and give discretion to the department directors, so they'll be able to address these individual issues within their workspace and stuff like that, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
But.
Does that, I read through, it seems reasonable, does it include the local officials?
Yeah.
Cause we're employees.
Okay.
Were you trying to bring somebody in?
No, I was just, just curious, you wouldn't want my dog in here, you can't talk about a distraction.
Cause he's so cute.
Cute and furry and.
Wild.
The door.
Yeah, most dogs would never be welcome there, wacko.
You would all be bringing strands of my dogs home and you'd find them in your car and in on every piece of black clothing for the next three years.
Oh yeah, the cleaning lady, you're like, what was in there?
To be fair, there were several requests not to have them and I don't wanna go that route unless we just can't really try this and if it works, awesome.
Hmm.
Okay. Yeah.
That's fair.
If it really doesn't work, then I think that's where we say, hey, we gave it a whirl, but I feel like it's a, it's a positive vibe thing, I did some research on pets in the workplace.
Let's try it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it seems like it, it really does have a lot of benefit, so let's give it a whirl and I'll add Fridays if you guys would like.
It's our choice. Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Then I move to approve our.
No, I was just gonna say, just when, if you make a mention, just with that change.
Yeah, I will. I will, I move to approve our pet policy with the note that we will allow dogs on Fridays.
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Yes, I would like to clarify that it's pets, are we?
Excuse me, pet policy, our pet policy.
Pets on Fridays, um to vote?
Pets.
Hi.
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 Ooh, you know what? Somebody in the assessor's office is hatching sea monkeys today?
Oh my god.
Do you see monkeys count? Or do they have to be ambulatory to be a pet? Cause that is not clear on here.
I think non-aquatic pets is probably what we're focused on.
You have to bring your aquarium home every night?
I got fish.
Oh, it's it's Wednesday, I don't remember.
Like uh, I had my goldfish home.
Okay, sorry, it does say pets on here, but it's like, it doesn't say about.
Sea monkeys are like Fight Club, we don't talk about sea monkeys.
Sea monkeys.
Yeah, I don't think they they would be classified as an animal.
Why not?
Cause.
They're a bug? They're not a bug.
Be sure they're not.
They're crustaceans.
They're just in their organism. We left it up to the discretion of the directors, if they're like, no snakes.
I'm totally, I'm totally joking and I see monkeys.
Talk about being distracted by, you know.
Those games.
Uh, it's nice.
That's just discriminatory.
Pet rocks, would you have a pet rock?
Only on Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
On Friday.
The Fridays.
Uh.
Most people are too young to know about pet rocks.
That guy made millions.
What?
Oh yeah. Also, you can have a pet rock without finding it, this is a sea monkey.
Yeah, like a little shrimp.
Yeah, it's an animal.
A crustacean.
Right, Chair.
I believe. Uh moving on. Now we've gotten that extremely vital, important issue resolved. Uh agenda item number four is discussion and consideration of an intergovernmental agreement or I G A between Lake County and the city of Leadville to conduct and administer the twenty twenty-five coordinated election to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. This will be led by the wonderful Tracy Lawrence, and clerk and recorder, glad to Tracy.
Oh, thank you. Um this is a requirement by the state that we have a I G A in place prior to the election. Um so this is the one for the city. Um it's pretty straightforward, it just defines my responsibilities, their responsibilities, all the deadlines, um who's paying? What? Um but yeah. It's been vetted by both attorneys, um we're well ahead of schedule, Lori asked me to let's just get this done and so she doesn't have to think about it, so. Um we are still working on the I G A with the school just right now.
Okay.
I don't have my computer, so if you mind, using the verb ditch.
Any questions or comments? I have. Um I I will ask for a motion.
Give me a second, I clicked on detention.
Sorry.
I was looking at the pet policy. Um I move to approve the I G A between the city of Leadville and Lake County Government to conduct and administer the twenty twenty-five coordinated election to be held November fourth, twenty twenty.
I'll second the motion, to vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good. Got that settled. Moving on to the consent agenda, let me get a.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
Candace.
Yes.
Our M O U with H M I.
Yes.
Is not on here, I wanna be able to approve it before July eighth, is there?
Did you receive it? Yes, so, oh.
We'll have to have a special meeting.
Your signed copy?
I haven't received one signed.
Oh. I thought I sent it to you yesterday.
Did I not say that I couldn't?
Um, we have that for ratification on the seven fifteen.
Okay.
Um but it's ready for Candace to sign before the ninth, before the deadline, yeah.
And ratified. Great, thank you, just wanted to double check.
Yeah. Yes, I'm glad you did.
You did send it to me and it is my fault, I will sign it.
You, I did, okay, good. I was like, I could've sworn, but.
Sorry, I did email her about it, I should've signed it.
I will tell you. Great. Okay, thank you.
Tuesday is so, so Monday.
Monday was on Monday, so I got it on Monday while we were reading.
Alright, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I will second the motion, to vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, consent agenda approved. Um all packet materials for agenda items are available upon request with the county administrator. Uh to subscribe to emails or text notifications, please visit Lake County's website. And that makes it eleven fifty-nine, we will conclude today's regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioners, thanks everyone for showing up, thank you, staff.
Thank you guys. Thank you, public.
Oh, you're crazy.
Thank you, Tracy, thank you, Tracy.